Yes, absolutely. And just really quick for the board members on the line, I do want to more publicly introduce our new Agency Services Manager. And her name is Carrie Cavisto. And so you'll be seeing more and more of her in the next few weeks within this workshop and then future board meetings. And so, but to help her learn about our board meeting's structure and rhythm, I'm going to go ahead and do roll call today, but you may see her face and hear her voice in future calls. So we'll go ahead and do roll call. Mr. Aaron.
Here.
Mr. Brown. And I do have an update. Ms. Moore, Mr. Brown will be coming. He is tied up with another commitment around a scholarship committee and awarding some funds to well-deserving students. So he's coming. Mr. Coyne. Ms. DeBoer. Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Kenyon. Mr. Kinsler.
Jason reached out to me right before this, and he's in the middle of Jackson and Du Bois right now.
Okay. Mr. Klein.
I'm also in the middle of Jackson. I am here.
Mr. Law.
Alex has better signal.
I'm here, Amy.
Thank you. It's because he's stationary. Ms. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Smith. Ms. Thayer. And Ms. Tomasi.
Here.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, you do have forum of the board. So this meeting is open for public viewing. But as a reminder, this is a workshop. And so no public comments will be taken and no public, no decisions are being made in today's workshop. This is an educational workshop for those who are listening. If you do have questions or comments that you would like to, to ask during the educational session and you're watching online, those can be submitted through the Q and A function, which is at the bottom of your screen. We do ask that it's on the Q and A portion and not in the chat, because the questions that are submitted on Q and A are actually then incorporated into the recording of this call. Thank you. Thank you very much. And Josh and Aaron, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. So, before I turn it over to Josh, I just want to say thanks to Heather and, you know, others that are here today. This is really intended to be an informal, like Amy said, workshop, where we're really here to dive in deep into a conversation that we've all been very interested in for a long time and are finally getting an opportunity to implement some of our vision. And so this is really, this workshop here is really to help us do a deep dive, get some of our questions that might be mulling around in heads answered, as well as really just have a good conversation around this topic. This is going to be one of three that we'll be doing. And so, you know, this will, this will kick it all off. But, but really, please, as we, as we go through here, this is intended for good conversation. So.
Josh, I'll let you take it away.
Hey, thanks. Thanks, Aaron. And I guess to further that, you know, this idea of having conversations, making sure that they're in the public domain and we're able to really kind of get down into the nitty gritty of some of these, these topics that we're going to cover throughout the year. You know, it's, it's a, it's a part of Aaron's vision, I think, as, as board chair. And she's, she's pretty darn humble. So I'm going to make her embarrassed a little bit for a moment. But, you know, one of the things that I, I found immediately when, when I first started working with Aaron at the Business Council and her role on the board was, was this desire to get down into the particulars of a subject and make sure that, that people understood or at least could see the complexity or, or see some solutions by getting the information out there. And so this series that we're working on, one, we're in, in the venture capital, the very first of these, of many series throughout the year, really is, it's intended to get the information out there to, to really kind of spread the fact that maybe we don't all know everything about every topic, but we're willing to learn. We're willing to work on it together. More than anything, and Cindy, if you don't mind, I might have you mute your microphone. It looks, sounds like we're getting a little feedback from you. Thank you.
Yes.
It, it would be, it, it's just one of those things that as we get more information out into the state and utilize our small size, frankly, because we can get this information out to so many people, I really feel strongly that we're going to get the best answers. And we're going to encourage the discussions that will come up with solutions to the challenges that we face. And, and really, that's what this is all about, is, is coming up with really good solutions that impact policy, our programming, and the funding mechanisms that we have at stake. And in order to build that community resilience. And so I'm really looking forward to these discussions. I know it's a big topic for Aaron this year, and I appreciate her leadership there to get this going. And so thanks, Aaron, and thank you too for Heather and Mike for joining us today and being our special guests about this. It's going to be really, really good. Before we jump into that, though, I, I will be in a moment turning things over to Bert Adam, who is our Investments Director. But Bert, for the first couple of years of his work here at the Business Council, was our Entrepreneurial Services Manager. And, and what that really meant was him trying to understand as, as, you know, a high-growth entrepreneur, what does the landscape look like? Who else is out there like, like you? Who is doing the mentorship and providing training or mechanisms for people to improve their, their, their businesses and to really kind of get through those challenging times at the very beginning? And then what funding mechanisms are out there and mapping out that whole ecosystem? And, and while that's a bit of an overused word, it truly is like that, because without one piece of it, it can fail. And, and if the, all of the pieces are there, but they're not working together, it can fail. And so, you know, Bert did a lot of work to understand that in, in a, in a pretty challenging time in Wyoming's history, but also, you know, the world's. And so he's, he's kind of going to lay a little bit of groundwork about what that looks like, not just in Wyoming, but, but really anywhere, what does the, you know, kind of a high-growth entrepreneur experience? And what are the funding mechanisms? And then talk a little bit about how the, the Business Council is, is addressing that and, and what are some of the ways that we think we can do or, or help into the future? And then we'll turn it over to, to Heather and Mike to tell us a little bit about themselves and their experiences. And then we've got some, some questions and some, and, you know, kind of pepper this panel, if you will, with questions from our board. So again, I think a great thing to kick off and, and I think to frame it up to begin with, Bert has done a good job of, of laying it all out. So I'm going to turn it over to Bert for a few minutes.
Well, thanks, Josh, and good afternoon, Madam Co-Chair, members of the board. I'll share my screen here and go through a little bit of a presentation. I want to just try and set the stage for, for venture capital and for this series and really share what I've learned, like Josh said, over, over the past couple of years in the entrepreneurial ecosystem. Out of the way. So I'm also going to share, and as Josh mentioned, but really how we believe the SSBCI program can add value to the ecosystem in Wyoming. So I, I will start with just talking about the ecosystem and set a foundation for venture capital, where it fits and the current needs in Wyoming. And as I go through this, I'm going to try and keep it at a high level with a goal of, of all of us having a little bit of a shared understanding and where Wyoming is today. So when we think about the entrepreneurial ecosystem, I started with a word cloud. And if you look at it, it's a little bit complicated, maybe not complex, but has lots of different factors. You can see incubators, accelerators, funding, government, you know, just a lot of different pieces in that ecosystem. And seeing it like that is maybe a little overwhelming. So I think the first step that most people take is, how do you start to bucket it? How do you look at it in groups, right? So if you take that word cloud and start grouping it together, some of the things I see is education, research and development, intellectual property support, funding. And that's really what we're going to talk more about today with, with our venture capital and specifically the perspectives of founders. How do incubators and accelerators really help in the ecosystem? How do they add value? What do, what do startups need from the legal and accounting perspective? Mentorship and connection? And that's the second version of this series is really talking through that. And then policies and incentives. Workforce play is a big role in this. And then exposure and marketing. One thing, while this is helpful to bucket this, really, when I start looking at this, I like to look at it as a roadmap, right? And really, from the entrepreneur's perspective, what does it look like? And so I look at it, and we did a lot of work last year in foundational projects. And what I like to look at from that is, is this funnel. And thinking about where do these high-growth entrepreneurs go? What's the steps? What does it look like? And so what we've looked at so far is there's maybe five layers in this funnel. That first one is the education layer. And if you look, there's a lot of education opportunities in Wyoming, whether it's University of Wyoming, community colleges. There's, there's a lot of stuff going on at the local level, thinking about like Casper Startup Challenge, thinking about just, just the community level things and school challenges that can help educate. And on that layer, we're helping hundreds to thousands of entrepreneurs in the education layer per year. The next level is where we start to, to filter this down and really focus on high-growth entrepreneurs. Let's incubate and pitch. I think about the incubators in the state, like Impact 307. And this layer has started to expand with a recent EDA grant that they got. Silicon Cullar is another example that's, that's helping in this layer. They have the Pitch Day up in Jackson and really helping these startups at the very early, early stages of idea or concept and figuring out ways through these pitch challenges to, to help them with non-dilutive funding that can get them to some of those first milestones. That third layer in the funnel is really where the Business Council plays today. And that's some additional non-dilutive funding. That can be through programs that we've had historically, like Kickstarter, where we could award up to $50,000 per startup and help them get to those next milestones. The, the program that we currently have is the Small Business Innovation Research, and that's matching grants for federal grants. And we can award up to $100,000 for a Phase 1 and $200,000 for a Phase 2. And you'll see on the right, this, this funnel continues to get smaller. The number of entrepreneurs we're helping with this continues to get smaller. But that non-dilutive funding is important to really help them get traction and set them up for success as they go into the next layers to the accelerator and to raising equity. So that fourth layer is really where we start talking about equity. And, and these aren't distinct, right? This isn't an exact roadmap, because some, some startups get equity really early in this process. But generally speaking, this is how it flows. So that fourth one is the accelerator program, which we have here, G Beta Wyoming. And it's an eight-week intensive course to really help them narrow in on their pitch. And then in Week 8, they get to meet with a lot of investors. And then that can help them start that path to equity. And then the last one is really figuring out how to raise that first round, whether it's through angels or angel funds or early-stage VC. The next few slides, before I get there, will kind of focus on that last layer. And really, there's a lot of ways to slice and dice equity. And that, and that equity layer continues to get smaller and smaller and smaller. And probably why they use the term unicorn, because once you get to the bottom of that, it's, it's a little unique. So this next one is one way you can look. If you look out there and you want to figure out how to slice and dice the equity, right? It could be pre-seed or startup and seed and angel and Series A to IPO. If you look and you might find something like this, or maybe you're really trying to bucket them as early-stage, as mid, mid-market growth, maturity and enterprise, where you're thinking about things like M and A and SPACs, and where do they fit? Or maybe you'll find something really simple and thinking about pre-seed, seed, Series A, and then they say B+, because, you know, it could be B, C, D, whatever, and they don't want to get into the specifics. And then what it looks like when you go public. Something interesting on this one is they are adding things like crowdfunding, Regulation CF, what that is, and Regulation A+, which are unique things that, that entrepreneurs can do to raise money that aren't in that typical flow or continuum of venture capital. So let's talk a little bit about just the specifics in Wyoming. Now that we kind of have a little bit of a foundation. So when we look at this and we talked about Regulation CF, and this is just things that I know about today. So it's not totally all-inclusive, but we do have two startups that I know of that have went through the Wyoming Invests Now, where our local intrastate crowdfunding as a Regulation CF. We've got one company in the state that's interested, interested in a Regulation A+. As a way to kind of go public, semi-public, without doing a full IPO. We do have two existing funds. And these are funds that are specifically targeted at helping Wyoming entrepreneurs. And that's Breakthrough 307 and Casper and Echelon Capital out of Evanston. As we've done work with, with SSBCI and other things, we have talked with other people, and we have four additional funds that are interested in starting in the state. So we do see a little bit of a pipeline and a little bit of a flow there. We do have a lot of angel investors, and we do have one formerly organized angel group, that's Silicon Cullar up in Jackson. And then just some, some stats as we think about how many businesses are raising and what it looks like. And these are from PitchBook, so take it with a grain of salt. But in 2020, we had 29 rounds raised in Wyoming for a total of 29.68 million. And then in 2021, we saw a lot of growth in, in rounds for equity with 56 rounds for a total of 162.89 million. So as we think about that, I think it's a, it's a great segue for us to understand how SSBCI or the State Small Business Credit Initiative can fit into that ecosystem and what it can help with. So go back to this continuum of funding. Pre-seed, seed, Series A, B, C is the highest round that I've seen in Wyoming is a Series C. Mezzanine would be a function of helping entrepreneurs get that last bit of capital before they go public and then an initial public offering for IPO. And when we've talked to people, what we see is there's some, some needs in Wyoming. So one of the things that we heard was there's a, there's an early-stage need. And if you think about only having two funds that are kind of filling that gap right now, that's a need. They need it from the fund side to help syndicate those deals and help fill rounds, because most of your investors aren't going to do a whole round by themselves. And when you think about expertise and being specific, right now, I think both of our funds are fairly general. We don't have any specific expertise in maybe biotech or things like that to really build out the ecosystem. The other need we heard was really a bridge to coastal capital. So thinking about the bigger money in your Andreessen Horowitz or A16Z or any of these, you know, big, big funds. If you're stuck in pre-seed seed, there's a bit of a valley of death before you can get to that larger money. So how do we help bridge from the pre-seed seed in our funds today to that other money? So when we applied for SSBCI, we, we came up with two different ways that we can help target those gaps that we saw. One is the Wyoming Venture Fund. And this would, would be us helping to capitalize new or existing funds in the state. And that would be targeting, again, that pre-seed seed, Series A section. In the second was the Wyoming Venture Direct. And that's to kind of help with that bridge to coastal capital. That's late seed, A and early B rounds. So quickly, who can this help? Who can SSBCI help, right? So this can help new startups, as we talk about pre-seed seed through the fund. Us investing in a fund and that fund investing in the startups. It can help the new funds capitalize. It can help investment capacity in the state as we have more fund managers, more funds, more expertise. Can help existing companies raising maybe their second, third rounds. And it can also help with recruiting, right? There's potential to use these funds to recruit new businesses to have access to these funds into the state. So last, I'm going to jump into just the specifics around the Wyoming Venture Fund and the Wyoming Venture Direct. In our application, and, and these numbers are subject to change, because nothing is final yet through Treasury. But in our application, we've set aside 23.2 million for the Wyoming Venture Fund, again, targeting pre-seed seed and early A. And we anticipate that that money will be able to help us capitalize between seven and nine funds in the state. And it, like I said, it could be an existing fund, could be Breakthrough 307's Fund 3 that we could help with. It can be new funds, but over nine years. That's kind of our anticipated impact. With Wyoming Venture Direct, that's $35 million that we've set aside for that. And that can cover the late seed to early B. And I think that our intended goal with that is it can, it can help co-invest. This will be a, a direct co-investment fund. So a, an entrepreneur would come with a lead investor in place that's done the due diligence, that has a term sheet ready, and we can co-invest maybe 12 to 16 investments over that nine years. So with that, I will stop there for any questions about any of the foundational stuff. Good to go. All right, I will hand it back over to Josh to go through and do the founder panel then.
Hey, Bert, thank you. Thank you for walking through that. And, and I think as, for me, it was really, really helpful to kind of see all of the different levels that there are, all of the different options. And, and something I want to point out that I, that I'm really, you know, happy about, and I'm glad that, that we're involved in this more. You know, really thinking about venture and how we played in that space prior to, and, and even today, without SSBCI, that State Small Business Credit Initiative, was that we didn't really play much. And it was really more about connecting people with capital rather than having some capital to spend in there, except for the SBIR matching funds, which, which are really very successful. It's one of our highest ROI programs. And so to, to, for Bert and the gang, to kind of go out there and find an, an opportunity for us to be a part of that, that, that ecosystem, if you will, or be able to fund companies that are working through that, I, I think is really a key. And I, I like it because it goes back to the whole idea from the, from the Business Council's point of view, what are the policies, what are the programs and the funding mechanisms that we have to solve problems? Not necessarily to do what we've always done, but to solve the problems that are emerging and, and figure out ways to, to make it so that those are problems. So I, I really like that. And, and I do, I, I want to make sure that if anybody does have any questions on that for Bert, that before we jump into the next segment, that they have an opportunity to do so. Now, this is going to come as a shock to all of you, as well as all of you who, who follow us on all of our recordings. Kathy has a question. Ms. Tomasi, you have the.
Well, thank you, Josh. So I, I guess I don't understand how with the venture funds and the Venture Direct, what role the Business Council is going to play in that? Are, do we get equity? This is probably a very basic question, but I don't know the answer.
Yes.
Fantastic question, actually.
We would get equity, right? So this will be new for the state. And these are federal funds where the state is a pass-through in order to deploy this money. And so one of the, one of the pieces of guidance from Treasury is that we can use it for equity. And so these are equity investments. So we will be a, a limited partner in a fund when we make that investment, and we'll get returns back from those. And we will, we will be on the cap table with a direct co-investment when we invest the other way.
Okay. All right. And the, and the details of the investing and, and the equity terms, et cetera, will all be worked out individually? Or will there, there be a general umbrella that we go under?
The, and that's another great question, Kathy. The way that we have it structured today and the way we put it in the application is that we will be, if we invest in a fund, we will kind of sign on to their terms, and then it can, a side letter can accompany it. And, and similarly, if we do a direct co-investment, the reason we are doing a co-investment is that we're letting a lead investor set those terms. And so they will, because it's such a small quantity over the nine years, we're talking about seven to nine funds, 16-ish co-investments, they will all be probably a little unique.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any others? Okay. Great. Well, thanks, Bert, and excellent questions, Kathy. As usual, that helps clarify it a lot. I'm sure others had that exact same question. And so now we will, we'll move on to our panel. And we wanted to start out our panel with folks who are founders of companies and who have gone through some, you know, the, the challenges of having an idea and turning it into something and, and, and utilizing different forms of capital, because it's really important to, to kind of understand from their perspective what is happening before we take a look at some of the other perspectives in future and subsequent sessions. And so with that, we have Heather Schumaker and Mike Komets. And so to start us off, I'd like to have Heather start us. And Heather, if you could give us an introduction and also a little bit of your background, and, and then we'll go into some questions.
Great, that sounds good. Thank you so much, you guys, Josh, for the intro, Aaron for inviting me. I'm super excited to be here. So I'm Heather Schumaker. I'm a resident of Wyoming, and I live here in Cheyenne. And, you know, in a nutshell, I'm the CEO of a tech company called Language IO. It started out as a one-person company. My background is in software development, so I wrote version one of our source code. And thanks to funding, we grew from a company of one person, me, to a company of about 65 people today. The majority of folks who work at Language IO are in Wyoming, even though we do have people scattered all over the country at this point. We have to kind of take talent where we can find it, but we do our very best to hire here in Wyoming. And I think what's important for people to understand who are not, who haven't been founders or who haven't gone through the painful process of raising capital to grow a company, is why do you need capital? Aaron and I had lunch a few days ago. I think that was yesterday, time flies. And we were talking about that. Like, I think just fundamentally, a lot of people don't get, why, why do you even need capital? Why can't you just start a business and grow it the old-fashioned way with like sweat and equity and, you know, like we used to be able to do? And that's what I thought I'd be able to do when I founded Language IO. And just to give you a little more background on Language IO, because it's important in my story, the software that Language IO has built and sells today is software as a service. And specifically, our software enables companies to use their monolingual, often English-speaking support teams to provide support via chat, via email, via voice, you name it, in any language. So our technology is, you know, artificial intelligence, machine learning, natural language processing. It's, it's very sophisticated software. And it solves a very specific problem that companies who are expanding their services globally need to solve. They need to provide customer support in all of the languages that, that their companies need the support in, right? And when we, when I first built this software, we did grow organically and we were profitable. You know, we grew to about a company of 10-ish people. We were profitable, we were doing well. It was a big market that we were tapping. And we realized, you know, we're not going to have a lot of customers in Wyoming. There aren't global company, that many global companies in Wyoming. Most of our customers are in other, more populated areas of the United States and honestly, all over the world. But the market, our total addressable market is big. We were the first entrant into the space of multilingual customer support. But when you're going after a market that's lucrative, other companies are going to start competing with you. We were the first one in our space, which was cool. But then others started noticing the opportunity in providing this service and started competing with us. And one day, so I founded the legal entity of Language IO back in 2011, I want to say. You can go look at the Wyoming Secretary of State and see that's when it was founded. But a couple of years in, I saw something in the news that said a company called UnBabel, based in Portugal, just raised 25 million in VC funding and was going after our market. And at that point, I'm thinking, great. We are growing organically, and yes, we're profitable and doing well, but we cannot compete with somebody like this Portuguese UnBabel company that just received 25 million in VC funding. Suddenly, their marketing efforts were completely eclipsing us. They were able to hire sales folks, they were going after our market, and then a few other companies. And then a few other companies entered the market as well and started competing against us. So Language IO basically had the decision to make. We can continue to do our best to grow organically, not get funding. But we're going to die a slow death because we cannot compete with companies that have millions and millions of dollars in VC funding. So we had to kind of rethink our strategy and say, okay, time for Language IO to raise money too. Now, just so you know how this went, it was a struggle at first, but to date, we've raised about fifteen million in funding, a combination of friends and family. Angel, thanks to breakthrough three oh seven, Silicon Cool War, and then later VCs that came in from out of state. So we were eventually successful, but it was a struggle in the early years of fundraising, let me just say. Because A, this was pre COVID, when everybody was going into the office. And so to raise VC funding, you were expected to be in a major population center. You were expected to be in Silicon Valley or in New York City or in Boston and any of the tech hubs where they expect you to be. And so I would get these meetings with VCs in Silicon Valley or Boston or New York. And they'd be like, you're in Wyoming, like, how do you get engineers in Wyoming? How do you get salespeople in Wyoming? And I'd explain, I'd be like, oh, it's actually a really good opportunity. Wyoming is a super business friendly place. We have this great partnership with University of Wyoming. The cost of living here is lower, so we can actually hire folks much less expensively than you have to pay in Silicon Valley or New York City. But still, it's, you know, it's a great salary that we're paying here in Wyoming, so it's not difficult. No matter what I would say, I felt like I was speaking to a wall because as soon as I said we're in Wyoming and they had never funded a company in Wyoming or even heard of a SaaS tech company in Wyoming. I was, it was over, basically, the conversation was not going to progress from there. So after a few false starts and some some suggestions that I moved the company to San Jose, where I did not want to go. I gave I gave it up for about a year and I was just like, you know what? This isn't working. I don't want to move to a large population center. I live in Wyoming, this is my state. Let's just see what we can do. I was at an Array School Party in Cheyenne. And this guy came up to me and he's like, hey, my name is Josh. I have an angel group in Casper. I hear you have a SaaS software company. We're interested in funding you. I was like, that's amazing, like, where have you been? And it was so awesome because it was breakthrough three oh seven. And they made a massive difference in our ability to stay in business, to be competitive. And breakthrough three oh seven invited us to pitch in Casper to their group of angel investors. And we, myself and two engineers at the time that Erin knows. And some of you probably know Craig Bowle. Yes, I see some nodding of heads who used to be at, shoot, now I'm losing TJ Maxx was formerly.
Sierra.
Sierra, thank you, thank you. I'm losing my words today. It's been a long day. I had a three hour board meeting. I apologize. So yeah, so Craig is, you know, crucial to our organization as well. So Craig and I and another junior dev went and pitched to breakthrough three oh seven. They were super enthusiastic because there aren't a lot of tech companies, especially AI based product sizable tech companies. They helped us raise half a million dollars. And I cannot tell you how important that money was to Language IO and our ability to stay competitive. It was only half a million dollars, which seems like a lot and it seemed like a massive amount at the time. But when you're competing with companies all over the world who are pulling in investments of twenty million out of the gate, like, that's critical to your survival, to be able to remain competitive. So that kind of kicked off our fundraising process. Once, once we raised that half a million through breakthrough three oh seven, Silicon Cool War, a few other folks that we pulled in from a variety of places, but largely Wyoming investors. That was kind of a platform to make us appear as a viable organization. And at that point, when I would go to VCs, I would explain that we'd already raised half a million dollars. It made them feel like somebody had faith in us, investors have faith in Language IO. And so we were, it was much easier at that point to then move into a series seed of an equity investment. And I was able to connect with somebody on the East Coast in Boston specifically, who is willing to lead a five million dollar seed round. That again was crucial to our ability to stay competitive. And from there, others were willing to join in. We got an investment from VCs in Silicon Valley. And in fact, in Colorado, Caruso Ventures, in case you're familiar with with Dan Caruso is now a major investor in Language IO as well. And we've, like I said, raised about fifteen million to date. We, with that money, have been able to grow to, you know, a company of sixty people. We have lots of customers all over the world. And we're seeing about three million today in ARR annually recurring revenue. Because we're a subscription based company, we're not generating services revenue. And for folks who know what I'm talking about, having recurring revenue, subscription based revenue that repeats month over month and year over year makes you much more interesting to investors. We actually started out as a services based revenue generator, where you just are paid project by project. Because that revenue isn't guaranteed to recur. It, you're not as valuable a software company until you're actually generating recurring subscription based revenue. So we are, we're on target to triple our revenue this year. The the magic formula is triple, triple, double, double, double. And so that's what the investors want us to do. We're going to be raising a series B. We're going to start going after that funding. I'm at the end of this year, once we see, once VCs see that we've continued to meet our numbers quarter over quarter. Yeah, and so now Language IO has huge opportunity. And honestly, we wouldn't have this opportunity to grow and continue to hire folks, high paying salaries here in Wyoming. If breakthrough three oh seven hadn't given us that that initial opportunity. And I want to keep this as conversational and interactive as possible. Got lots of directions I could go in what I'm telling you, but at this point, I just love to hear what your questions are and where you'd like me to continue talking.
So Heather, thanks for that intro. And you touched on on a number of things. We may dive into those in more detail in a moment. So what I think we'll do now, Heather, if it's okay with you, we're going to jump over to Mike and have him introduce himself and the companies that he's been associated with and kind of their capitalization and or sweat equity that's been happening within his travels, we'll call it. And then we'll come back and ask both of you some some other questions to follow on with that. But excellent introduction. I think we have a really good feel for it and we're really glad you're here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Josh. Josh was part of our sweat sweat equity, so he he has a few extra wrinkles as as a result of that. But my name is Mike Kmetz. I am a third generation Wyomingite. I've been involved in, in, I guess, five startups, four of which turned out to be successes, one went down in flames. And I'll be happy to tell you a little bit more about that and why. But the company that I ran for a long time was called I D E S. I started it when I was just out of graduate school back in nineteen eighty six. And Bernard, I enjoyed seeing your slides and what you guys have put together. And it's really ironic because I was asked to be on the Wyoming Business Council by Governor Garriger back in, I think it was ninety eight. It was the, it was right when they spun the Business Council out from all these entities at the state of Wyoming. And we had one, one really shrewd guy on the board, his name was Roy Whitney. And he said, we ought to be figuring out how to get equity out of these companies. And he just couldn't get anybody's ear. So it's interesting that we fast forward all the way to today and and it looks like that may happen. And I think that's a real key part of having the Wyoming, you know, having the state of Wyoming being involved is to have them have a stake in the outcome. So good for you guys, if you can, if you can make that happen. So so the company that I ran for a long time, based out of Laramie, we were in the in the plastics industry, but we were a software company. And and Heather has talked about recurring revenue. That was the heart and soul of our business. You know, we were able to grow successfully for a lot of years as a result of being able to early on generate that recurring revenue. And we started that company, really, it it was bootstrapped pretty much by myself and then later on with another partner. We had a little bit of investment, but way back then, there really was nothing available. You you couldn't find kind of traditional venture capital almost anywhere. So we didn't know how to go about that. And, you know, I think as a lot of entrepreneurs do, we just were pretty scrappy. So we developed the software, you know, at night. And the thing that I learned early on is that, you know, nothing happens unless you sell something. So, you know, we we began to build a sales organization pretty early in the in the history of our company. So, you know, fast forward that by about twenty five years, we, you know, we ended up with a really nice little company in Laramie, you know, highly profitable, you know, lots of good blue chip clients that ranged from, you know, Dow Chemical to ExxonMobil. And, you know, just really solid companies like that. And an organization called Underwriters Laboratories out of Chicago came in and ended up buying the company in two thousand and twelve. And so it was a, it was a really good run. And today, you know, the remnants of that company still exist and are thriving. If you go to Laramie and you look up on the hill north of town, the city built UL building and it's, you know, it's full of principally high paying IT jobs. So, you know, I would consider that to be to be a pretty good success. So in two thousand and fourteen, a colleague of mine contacted me about another business venture. And and since this one is a little more current and it may be a little more germane to fundraising, I'll spend a few minutes and and talk to you about about this organization. The company was called Teton Simulation Software. And the whole idea was that we wanted to come in and impact an industry through software by looking at ways we could create efficiency. And where we landed was in the 3D printing space. So if you all are familiar with 3D printing, it's really an up and coming technology that, you know, you can expect for the next twenty years to have it really grow and become more of a mainstay, you know, throughout the world for the most part. And the the concept that we had basically would allow you through software to create more efficient 3D printed parts. So my partner and I, you know, we're thinking about how we could ramp this company up. And and the first thing that we didn't know was whether we had something that would be of value. So we took, we probably took the first six months of the life of the company and not even organized at that point. And I pulled out my Rolodex from my prior business and we started calling these companies and just talking to them about the problems that they had and trying to see if we could reconcile in our mind whether a software product could help them solve the problems. And initially, we were looking at a process that I was really familiar with called injection molding. And about three or four months into that, that questioning period with a whole bunch of people, someone directed us toward 3D printing. And it's like the light, you know, the light really went off for us. And and so we wanted to direct this product to this new and exciting 3D printing industry. And so the question comes up, how do I, how do I think about capitalizing the company so that I can begin to address the market? And the direction that we went, you know, we, if you think about how to do it, you know, at its very early stages. And I'm sure Heather wrestled with with this when she got her company going. Is how do you get the business off the ground initially? Because you don't have a product, you have an idea. If you go out and raise money right at that stage, you know, you're probably going to get clobbered on the valuation. You'll give up a whole lot of the company. So so how do you go about doing it? So in the case of our company, Teton, there was no way that we could kind of burn the midnight oil ourselves and develop the product. It was, it was much too sophisticated of a product and it would take a lot more resources than we could possibly bootstrap. And we weren't really that keen on going out to these early, early stage entities. Jared Stack at, you know, at breakthrough three oh seven, he said, you know, for where you guys are, we're going to have to have eighty percent of your company to provide you with money. So you sit back and scratch your head and say, well, how can we get this thing going? And my my partner, Andy, had quite a lot of experience through another company in Laramie called Firehole in going after SBIR money. And, you know, we were able to do that much to the extent of Andy's expertise and putting together the right proposal at the right time. And we presented it to the National Science Foundation. And we ended up getting a phase one grant, which allowed us to do some hiring and software engineers. We were successful with that grant. We got a phase two. We were able to work through the Wyoming Business Council to get their SBIR match. And the company was off and running. So we had that SBIR money, which, you know, I I could talk more about that and how critical I think it is for any tech company to take a very, very hard look at that. Because as as those of you have have that have been involved with that know, it is non dilutive and you don't have to pay it back. It's like the perfect kind of money if you can qualify. And if you, if you want to, you know, put in the the time and take the pain of working with the federal government. But it's, it's absolutely the best money that you can have as a startup, if you can, you can get your hands on it. So with that, with that in our hands, we set off to build the business and employed the software developers that we needed. And at the same time, we're thinking about further capitalizing the business. And we realized that to get the product to market, we were going to need more than the NSF. All told, I think we we ended up with about a million and a half of the of the NSF money. And at that point, after we were able to get the product to a point where we had what we call an MVP, a minimal, minimal viable product, we went back to breakthrough three oh seven and they were a lead investor for us. And, you know, we were able to go through some of their contacts, some that we had as well, and raise another seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And so with that combined finance package, we were able to launch the product and to begin to build a sales team and get get Teton, you know, moving ahead. So we operated in that fashion for about a year to a year and a half. And we realized, like a lot of entrepreneurs do, it's going to take more money and more time to make this happen. And so we started to think about another round of fundraising. Congruent to that, we've been talking to a lot of companies that manufacture 3D printers to do partnerships. And one company in particular had indicated some interest in acquiring Teton. So we had a dance going for probably a year with this company and with our fundraising. And it became pretty evident to us as we looked at what the dilutionary effect would be of this second round of funding relative to moving ahead with the acquisition. You know, we felt like there would be more and more money necessary and more and more time. And, you know, for the stage we were at with the company, which we were really at pretty much zero revenue, we were able to get a really nice offer with a company called Mark Forged. And about a month ago, we ended up selling Teton. So that's the story with that business. And, you know, the way that it worked out, I think it's, it was really beneficial to everybody, our investors. They didn't get the kind of return that we initially pitched them. But but they did get a, their IRR was was quite nice, you know, they had their money in for about two years. And so we were able to give them, you know, a decent kickback on that. And now our entire team is is working for Mark Forged and, you know, principally out of Laramie, but also in Sheridan. And then like Heather, we have people that are kind of scattered all around the country. So so that in a nutshell is my story and be happy to answer any questions for you.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. And and again, I think you, you, you and Heather had some, you know, some similar, similar paths and maybe some differences. And and I think that that, you know, it's going to set us up really well for these these next few questions. So I'm going to pose these and and feel free to jump in and and answer, or I can go to each of you and take a take a crack at them. I think the first thing that that I wanted to ask has maybe because you've given a really good picture of the capitalization of your organizations over time. I kind of wanted to understand the mentorship aspect that each of you got from the outside world as you went through this process. So business mentorship, venture mentorship, the mentorship that you had from taking your idea from an idea to either, you know, a successful company that's growing or an acquisition. And Heather, how about if we start with you? Can you talk a little bit about mentorship and what that's meant to you or how it looked along the way?
Yeah, sure. And I don't want this to sound bad. But it was hard to find good mentorship for a SaaS company that was scaling in Wyoming. That was tough. And we put together an advisory board and I pulled as many people in from Wyoming as I could. But there is just, the tech ecosystem here is just so small and scattered that it was really hard to find mentors in Wyoming. The first group that was actually valuable to us was breakthrough three oh seven. When we got that funding from breakthrough, Jared especially, he was on our board at that point, negotiated a board seat for the investment. And a few other folks at breakthrough, they they started to give us some really good advice. And then some folks from Silicon Cool War joined that round and Jackson and Alex, I always say his name wrong. I want to call it. I want to call it Muram too, but I think that's not how.
It's a Morum Sev.
Morum Sev, thank you. Alex was amazing. He's got experience here. But as you grow and get bigger and bigger, the scaling challenges are different. So where Jared and Alex were able to give great, yeah, exactly. Were able to give great advice for the early stage. We needed more experience as we got bigger. And so they stepped off of the board and we'd, we had to pull in folks from the, the VCs on various coasts to help us scale. Now, that's not to say that they, these people don't exist in Wyoming. You know, Mike probably would have been a great resource. Mike, I have to tell you something. With IDES, I was working for a startup that was based in Boulder and we rented space from you. It was called Lingoport and we rented.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
In the Wagner.
I remember that well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I remember one of my engineers got in trouble because he was using BitTorrent to download music. And your IT folks came in and shut him down. So that's funny story, such a small little ecosystem. But yeah, back to the mentorship. It's hard to find mentors that know what they're doing, that have done it before here in the state of Wyoming. So anything that the Business Council can do to find folks who have done this before here in Wyoming, make them available to us would be amazing.
Thanks, and I, I would echo that Heather with regard to Breakthrough Three O Seven. You know what Charles Walsh and Jared have done up there, I think is, is really a boon to the state because it's not just them, it's the connections that you can make as a result of them. And when we, when we were able to get them in place as the lead investor, we, we could have raised a lot more money. We just didn't want to because we felt like, you know, we, we'd kind of done the balance between the raise and the amount of dilution that we wanted to take in. But, you know, that, having that available was just tremendous for us. You know, I met a lot of people along the path. I, I, I spent a lot of time working on that first round. And you kind of naturally meet people that will, that will help you. And a lot of the folks that I talked to outside of, you know, Jared and his group, really none of them were within the state of Wyoming. We did talk to the Jackson, the Jackson guys, but we couldn't really get any traction with them. But I, I think that, you know, from a venture capital perspective, you know, Wyoming has a pretty good friend in Access Ventures down in, in Boulder. And Josh knows Brian Wallace, who is one of their principal guys. And we went down to see him three or four times. And when we were looking for money, we, we sat down with him and he said, well, what's your, what's your monthly run rate? And I said, it's zero, Brian, which getting this off. And he said, come back when you're at about a million a month and we'll, we'll talk. So I think, you know, we, we might call this venture capital, but it's, it's a very specific thing now. And I think it's changed because the VCs have upped their game, right? So I, I think five years ago, we could have gone down and talked to Brian. And if we would have had a little revenue, they might have been interested in us. But, you know, other, other VCs, we, you know, we realized that it was probably not going to be a benefit for us to talk to them. We needed to be looking at family offices and other, other angel groups to be able to go after the, the funding. I mean, I went down to Phoenix and pitched an angel group. And it, it, it's interesting, you know, how the fundraising goes. I had a guy that followed me out of the pitch and he goes, yeah, I'm in for, for twenty five thousand. And, and it's just, you know, you, you range from individuals who, you know, who get what they're doing and for some reason want to put money in to others who do diligence, who do due diligence forever and never, never put money in. But the mentorship through all of that, I think, helps a lot because you, you only have so much time, right? And, and the mentors can often channel you in, in the, in the right direction to have a higher degree of success.
Hey, hey, Mike, I might, I might jump on something you said and then after you talk a little bit about it, I think turn it back over to Heather. Cause I think there's a little bit of a, I don't know if it's a difference or if it's just in the way that you were saying it. But you mentioned that you were looking at sort of a balance between the, the equity that you were either willing to give or the amount of money that you wanted to kind of raise. You maybe could have raised more, but you said, look, we want to be at a spot that is comfortable to us. It matches up with the market. How did you know what that was or, or, you know, what is that like?
Yeah, that, that's a really good question, Josh. And, you know, for, for us throughout all the businesses, you know, we look at equity as gold and you don't want to give it away. You don't want to, you don't want to sell it or rent it. You want to keep as much as you possibly can. But at the same time, you can really be constrained in terms of, of growing your business. So when we did our first raise, it was, we ended up raising seven hundred and eighty thousand. And, you know, we, we, we kind of had a target. We'd worked with Jared a little bit to decide on what kind of dilution we might be looking at. And, you know, we negotiated that as hard as we could. But I think we ended up giving up about seventeen percent of the company for that, for that amount of money. And, you know, you factor everything into it, we were a zero revenue organization. So all we had going for us was the idea. And we had a whole bunch of customer data that, that quantified that, that our D, our idea could be a good one. So that, you know, that worked out and, you know, we honestly felt like we could get to a decent revenue ramp with that amount of money. And, you know, coupled with the money that we'd been very successful at getting from the, the National Science Foundation. And, and then you throw COVID into that, we launched right in the middle of that. And, and the other thing is that we, for what we developed, we were really early in the industry. So we had some early adopters that said, you know, this, this is awesome. It solves a really big problem we have. But we didn't sense that across the entire base of, of our addressable market, right? And so we thought, you know, we're going to need more money. And, you know, this, this is, this is probably how much we want to go after. And I think, I think we were, we wanted to raise another two million dollars. And, and again, we just looked at that two million and as, as the founding group looked at it, we said, okay, we, we believe the two million will get us to a point where we might not need any more money before we get acquired. Or if we need more, we'll be able to command a much higher valuation. And so, so we kind of had that penciled in and because we were at zero revenue, we were able to find groups, we, we had the, the Colorado Venture Group. I forget the name of them. Doug was working with them, but, but we had, we had a term sheet from them. And, and the term sheet to us looked really lousy. And we had no negotiating power because we didn't have the revenue ramp that we, that we had really desired. So that's what, at, at the end of the day, that we balanced against an offer from a, an acquirer. And, you know, you look at the economics of both of those and, you know, I just ran the back of the envelope and I said, okay, guys, let's, let's look out five years. Let's assume that we would need to do this two million dollar round and we're going to need one more. I just know we're going to need one more. And we looked at what the effect of that would be, the dilutionary effect of, of doing that in three to five years versus taking the acquisition economics today. And the economics weren't what we had hoped for by any means because the company acquiring us knew that we were at zero revenue and we really hadn't, you know, made a lot of progress in a, in a, like a one year period. But the strategic fit was perfect. And that, that's what allowed us to get the economics up to a point where, you know, the shareholders said, let's do this thing and, and we ended up doing it.
Well, that, that's, that's super helpful to understand that calculus and realize that, you know, we kind of think, oh, well, money, you know, capital is the problem and, and lack of capital is a problem. And it's, and it's not necessarily the case. And there are many things that a founder kind of factors into that. And so maybe with that, Heather, could you, you know, kind of jump on that a little bit and, and either, you know, kind of go with your perspective on that and what you found?
Yeah, absolutely. And Mike really nailed it earlier on when he said, if you can wait to go out for investment until you're already generating revenue, that's the way to go, right? Because getting investment when you don't have any customers, when you don't have any revenue, that's where you're going to lose your shirt. You're going to have to give up so much of the company that it's often not worth getting the investment. In the case of Language IO, you know, I was just lucky I had exited lucratively from another startup. And what had enough financial independence where I could take the time to build the product and generate revenue before we actually went out for, for funding. And we, you know, were able to, I think we'd reached about a million in annual revenue before we went out for funding. It was a problem that the market was waiting for. There was a great product market fit. And so we, you know, we got lucky there. And what it often boils down to is, so we were at a good place to get funding. It was the ideal stage when we actually went out for funding. And a lot of people are afraid to give up shares in their company. Like, they're like, crap, I'm going to have to give up twenty percent, twenty-five percent of the company. And the way that we thought about it is, yeah, you know, I can maintain ownership of eighty percent of a company that's generating a million dollars in revenue. Or I can own fifty percent of a company that's worth twenty times that much, right? So you have to do the math and, you know, in Mike's case, he had this opportunity to exit. That's awesome. We were also approached by folks who wanted to buy Language IO. But we saw this huge opportunity for growth and we weren't ready to part with it for, you know, five million dollars when we knew that the company was going to get big and we had this huge opportunity. So, and you also have to look at yourself, like what am I as an entrepreneur willing to put into this? Because growing a company is work, it's stress, you know, growing a company. I wake up in the middle of the night thinking, what am I doing? Like there are sixty people under this umbrella that I'm responsible for now. So you do have to take a long, hard look in the mirror and think, can I really meet these revenue goals quarter after quarter? Is this something I'm ready for? And if you're not, if you don't want that level of stress, then, then yeah, look for an exit opportunity earlier in your evolution. But if you have the opportunity for growth like we do, we decided to just go for it. We're going to go for a Series B this year, probably a Series C after that. And either at that point, look to acquisition or IPO.
Yeah, that's, that helps, that helps a lot. And I think that you, you've said some things that, you know, they're maybe, maybe going to help us from a policy program and funding perspective. But that grit to be able to keep working or, and, and/or that calculus to say, look, we, we may want to, we may want to cash it out and then go start another one and do something different. I think.
Exactly.
That's a really interesting thing. And I think the conversation around those and, and to be able to have them, you know, with more people are, are going to help, right? Because everybody faces those. So I appreciate that. So I'm going to ask you both one more question before I turn it over. I, I know at least one member of our panel will have at least one good question, probably maybe this many. But, but I, I, I definitely want to give some time for our panel to ask you some questions. So before I do that though, I'm going to ask a completely, well, it's sort of self-serving, but it's also self-serving for the state. How would you improve the venture capital or, or maybe we should say the funding ecosystem in Wyoming for high-growth entrepreneurial endeavors?
Want me to take that first?
Sure.
So, so I think you have to, I think you have to wind it back a little bit and, and kind of think about, about the flow of funds and where money might come from. If, if you had, I hate to make a, an analogy to the Bay Area, but it kind of holds, right? If you had a thousand startups in Wyoming and, you know, they were beginning to ramp their businesses and, and, and beginning to generate revenue, you, you would, you would have money all over, from all over the place, right? And, and, you know, geographically, we, we didn't really look within Wyoming aside from, aside from Jared. So, so, so the money can come in, whether or not the entity is here in Wyoming or not is immaterial. And, and I, I think the bigger challenge for Wyoming, and it's been here forever, is how, how do you, how do you provide the, the infrastructure, the, you know, the background, everything that is necessary to begin to grow companies? How, how do you hatch startups? And, you know, I know that there's an incubator system. It's been there for a long time. I was part of the original group with John, John Benson, you know, when the one in Laramie got started. But I, my personal assessment is that it's just not where it needs to be. And, and, and probably for a lot of reasons. But, but with, without a growing core, successful entrepreneurs, I just don't think you'll ever get the money here. And, and if you do, it'll be, it'll be sporadic. And, you know, I, when Jared started his fund, I said, well, what's your biggest fear? And he said, deal flow. Are we going to get enough deal flow that this thing makes sense? And, you know, I haven't, they funded us and they funded Heather. And, and I know that they, they've dispersed quite a lot of their, their fund one. And I don't know how much of that has gone to Wyoming companies. And I don't know if deal flow is the problem, but I would guess Jared's path would be a lot easier. And it would allow him to maybe grow that fund if he had a lot more Wyoming opportunities. And, and I think that's the, the crux of it, Josh, is that the, the money will happen. You, you've got to have the startups and you've got to have, you know, a, a critical mass of that going on, on an ongoing basis. And you have to begin to see successes out of that because once the entrepreneurs have seen success and they have some money, they kind of want to get back in the game, right? And they want to put money back in and it just starts the, the ball, the ball rolling. So I, I think that's, that's where you really have to start and, and that's at the crux of it.
Thank you, Mike. Heather?
Yeah. So there's a few ways to go with this. I mean, in the end, money attracts money, right? And tech attracts tech. If Wyoming could get one really big win, one big tech win, a unicorn here in the state of Wyoming, it would generate its own ecosystem. Like a good example would be Montana. So there was this little client relationship management platform called Right Now Technologies. I want to say based in Billings or Bozeman, I forget which, you probably have heard of them. They got to be really big in the market. They gobbled up a huge market share in the CRM space. Then Oracle acquired them. And then it just blew up and little services companies and related tech firms spun off in that area. And now there's a decent ecosystem there. So if Wyoming could do something like that, it would go a long way. And I will also say that now at post-COVID, I mean, COVID is a horrible thing. But the one benefit of COVID is that companies just started to say, you know what? We don't have to all go into the office. We can be wherever we want to be. I can have my company and my employees all over the country if I want to. And what that did for folks is allowed them to move to less populated areas. I mean, honestly, engineers are sick of living in Silicon Valley in New York and Boston. They're sick of having to be there. A lot of people want a wide open spaces and lower population areas. And now you can go to Wyoming and found a company or even be part of a larger company and just work here. So when I talk to VCs now and I say, yeah, we're HQ'd in Wyoming, before they'd be just like, oh yeah, that's weird. Now they're like, oh, cool. I would love to move to Wyoming. So the opportunity is here now for folks to found companies here, to just move here in general. But the state of Wyoming has to incentivize that. And I think what you guys are doing is going to go a long way. But it's not just the money for tech firms, but it's also the infrastructure and also just amenities to attract people to Wyoming communities. And I know this sounds maybe peripheral, but like bike trails and greenways and open space preservation, that's going to attract people to communities and make them want to stay here. So all of these things contribute, I think.
Very good. Thanks, Heather and thanks, Mike. I mean, even if for some reason we, we stopped right now, which we won't, that this has been, I think, really, really useful for us to, to hear and to, to kind of learn from both of you. Because in, in some, so many ways, you have similar experiences. But you, you also bring different perspectives to it, which I think is important. And I think if we had the, you know, double, triple, what, what was it? Triple, triple, double, double, double size of this panel, we would probably see that many different ways of, of kind of peeling this orange. So thanks for, for bringing your expertise and experience and, and your willingness to help Wyoming, I think, is, is another great thing. And with that, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to, to our, our board as well as anyone from the audience. So if you are in the panelist mode, which the folks from our board are, just raise your hand and I'll call on you to ask a question. And Mark is demonstrating perfectly what I would like you to do. So we're going to go to him after I let the folks who are in the audience who aren't able to talk to type your questions into the Q and A or, or the chat box. And we will be able to moderate it through that. So with that, I'm going to ask Mark to, to ask his first question.
Well, Josh, thanks. I'd like to be able to ans, ask the question, but I, I, they were so thorough that I'm more, I'm more of a comment and Heather mentioned it, or I mean, about an anchor and I, you know, I saw that in Fargo when Great Plains Software was bought by Microsoft and it just exploded. And her comments about amenities, you know, we certainly see. And her comments about amenities, you know, we certainly see that up here as a driver and things like that. But this is just, just for me, this has been one of the most informative things. I don't know if it was Aaron or you or whatever, but, but to get some insight to see the, the effort within the state of Wyoming to start from A to B to C and so on and so forth, which has been great. So, sorry, I don't have a question. I'll think of that after the meeting's over.
Well, well, don't worry. We also have Kathy who is, got her hand up. Kathy?
So this is mostly a question for Heather. And Heather and Mike, this was fascinating to me. I, I valued this so much. But Heather, when you were talking about the triple, triple, double, 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 did you, and, and this has nothing to do with, but did you feel pressure from your VC people to increase your business so rapidly that, that it might have taken away from long-term thinking? What was your thought about that? And then the other thing is, how did you grow as fast as you did? And, and deal with issues if you were, if you were getting pressure from VCs?
No, that's a really good question. And that's what a lot of people are afraid of when dealing with VCs. And I will say, it's super important that you find a VC that you can live with. VCs that aren't jerks and aren't going to just make your life hell, excuse my language. Because there are a lot of horror stories out there, right? There are a lot of times you've heard of VCs swooping in, investing massive amounts of money in your company, taking 50% of it and then replacing the founders with their own people. Like, this does happen, right? So that's where mentorship in Wyoming and helping entrepreneurs not find themselves in that situation is really important. And that's where Alex and Jared were super helpful. I mean, Alex, I know that you're here and listening. At one point, Alex reached out during our fundraising effort. He's like, Heather, are you still, are you still in charge of your company? Like, is everything okay? So I always appreciated that support. And yeah, you do have to be careful. You have to pick a VC that has your interests in mind. Of course, they've always got the bottom line in mind. They want, they want to see a return on their investment. And we would not have grown as quickly or pushed ourselves to grow that quickly, of course, if VCs weren't involved. That said, if VCs weren't involved, we would have died a slow death because this market was exploding. And if we didn't grow quickly and gobble up as much market share as we could, we would no longer be in business. So we've, we've just gotten lucky and we very carefully selected the VCs that we work with to find ones that, yeah, they, they want to see an ROI, but they also have the interest of the company in mind. That's where kind of picking the right people is really important. But what was your second piece to that question?
I guess, how much input did you realize from the VCs? And did, I mean, did you have undue influence? Undue input, I guess, is what I'm thinking.
That's a great question, too. I'm gonna be honest. I've never grown a company or scaled a company from 1 million to 100 million in revenue. I've never done this before. So personally, I appreciated the input that these VCs brought to Language I O. So I just got out of a three-hour board meeting with our VCs, one of whom is Robert DeVoli. He used to be with a firm in Boston called Sigma. Now he started his own VC firm called Gut Brain Ventures. And they've done it hundreds of times. They know what works. They know what doesn't work. Now, again, personality plays a huge role here. I could have complete jerks on my board who are mean about it, but the folks that we've pulled into the fundraising process are thoughtful, they're understanding, they're not too pushy. Again, we just got lucky. We got good VCs who, who want to see Language I O grow and are doing the right thing for the company. Does that make sense?
It, yes, it does. That explained a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
All right. Great, great question there, Kathy. I think that's something that does weigh on not just everybody, and this calls mine, but, but definitely founders for sure. So with that, we'll move over now to Erin.
Thanks, both of you. So Mike and Heather, as we kind of are going down this venture, right? From a business council perspective, there's two things that we want to see as economic impact with, with the money that we have to invest, right? We want to be able to, one, set a good model for how this, how the state can invest and get a return on its investment and be able to reinvest and have economic impact, right? But the other aspect of that is we want to be able to see a long-term growth. And so companies that are growing here and staying here. And I think we've all been, we've all seen through the years, a lot of companies that start here and sell off and then end up elsewhere, right? So what, what, as we go down this, and obviously you're bringing a decent amount of money to the table in this, what advice do you have for us from, from the venture capital perspective in how we should handle our investments to be able to get that long-term economic impact for Wyoming that we're looking for? Knowing that hopefully we're not conflicting with any other VCs that are coming to the table with the companies that we're working with.
I'm happy to jump in, Erin. I'm sure Mike has comments, too. But there's, there's a lot of things to think about here. As you, one of the things you said, Erin, was you want to see companies stay in Wyoming, not just get to a certain level of success, get bought, and then it, you know, it goes wherever it goes, right? So of course, the, the early-stage angel stage, seed, seed stage that Bert described for us early, earlier is really important. We have to fund the, the initial investments. But, but you also have to fund the Series B, Series C stages because that's when companies see the massive expansion. And if you're funding Series B, Series C companies here in Wyoming, that means you're enabling these Wyoming companies to grow to the larger size that's going to employ more people, going to enable them to stay in business and look, look toward these larger revenues, larger profits, so they don't need to go for acquisition as quickly. Does that make sense, Erin? So as far as how they might interact with other investors who are already funding, like for Language, I'll just use my company as the example because this is the one I know. So we're gonna be starting to seek a Series B round at the end of this year. We've already got great investors who are going to be assisting us in the fundraising process. But like Mike, I think, said earlier, it's generally not just one VC, especially when you're talking about, say, 25 million in a Series B raise, right? You'll have a lead VC, which might not be you guys, but lead VCs are happy to have other investors participate. And so your organization could still get a big chunk of equity. Let's say Language I O, of course, you know, I'd be happy to have you guys invest in our company when you go out for the Series B. But let's say that Caruso leads our Series B. They'd be in for maybe 10 million. And then somebody else could be in for another five. It's not a problem to be part of a round. You don't have to be the only one in the round. VCs like to see other people participating. And if your home state is participating, that's all the better. Does that, that make sense, Erin?
Yeah. And I think that the partnerships with the VCs are really important because you want them to lead the due diligence, right? You want them to make sure that where your money might go, it's going to be parked with an entity that, that has been well-understood. And, you know, I think some past attempts that I could think about from the state's perspective, the, the state would be the funding entity, but they honestly just didn't have the skill sets because they don't do that all day, right? To be able to correctly evaluate whether the company was appropriate to, to receive the funding. On, on your other comment, Erin, with regard to companies getting bought and, and having them kind of dissipate within the state of Wyoming, I, I don't think that you want to do anything to get in the way of that happening because, well, you know, if, if there was some, some restriction in place, you would turn away a lot of potential acquirers, to be, to be quite honest. And I don't think that it's a bad thing. I, I'll, I'll tell you a little bit of a story. Long time ago, there was a little software company in Laramie that did, they did HR products, human resources. And the, I forget the name of the company, Josh, you might remember, but the entrepreneur was Brooks Mitchell, Aspen Tree Software.
Aspen Tree and then Snowfly.
Aspen Tree and then Snowfly. Well, a company came in and they bought Aspen Tree and they made Brooks a lot of money. And they said, hey, guess what? We're moving to Boulder. And wherever it was, somewhere in Colorado. And they moved the company, but, but a lot of the employees stayed in Laramie. And I can probably count three or four startups that occurred as a result of those entrepreneurs that were a part of Aspen Tree Software now doing their own thing. And, and, you know, I think you'll, you'll probably see the same thing with, with Plenty, you know, over in Laramie. You know, you have a, you have a pretty good group in Laramie and they're out in the Bay Area. But what is likely to happen, let's just say that Plenty goes public or gets sold, you're gonna create a lot of high-wealth individuals that want to stay in Laramie maybe or other parts of Wyoming, and they'll make investments there and they'll start to grow their own businesses. So it's kind of like you're planting seeds, right, with these acquisitions? Where if the mothership leaves, it's, it's not necessarily a bad thing. It may be actually a good thing.
I, I think there are two notable, other notables to that, right, Mike? I think we talked about Breakthrough 307. A big piece of that was Autodesk taking Firehole. And then also your newest venture with, with Doug Kennick, who was a part of it. So I think that's part of that. And it's the, the discipline is that you can't be restrictive. You have to allow that kind of free, freedom to happen. But by, by and large, you will lose some, but you'll gain more. And that's, it's a tough thing. And it'll be, it'll make for fun conversations with folks throughout the, throughout the state for sure. Let me just check really quickly. We've got about five minutes left. And I did get a couple of questions from someone that I definitely want to to cover that through the Q and A. Any other questions from board members or folks on the panel today? Well, I'm, I'm going to ask a question from actually someone who used to work with the Business Council, Bailey Evans, who is leading G Beta. She is, she's doing a whole lot of work now. And I think it's, it's really important work in this whole entrepreneurial ecosystem. She has a couple of good questions that I don't know if we have the answers to right this second, but they're questions that we will answer. And I think touched on a little bit in, in, in previous responses from, from Mike and Heather. But we'll definitely have to answer as we move forward with the SSBCI funding. And so I think it's important for us to get these out there because they, again, will work into our calculus on what we invest in and how we invest. So two questions from Bailey. Thanks, Bailey, for asking these, by the way. Not surprisingly, they're really astute and important for us. So thanks for doing that. Number one, how will the state quantify and measure success with its SSBCI investments? Should they be approved? And what metrics will say keep going versus not working? So the answer is, that's a great question. And, and that is something that we are going to have to continue to work on. One thing that, that I think it was Heather that mentioned that having other entities that do this all of the time as lead investors and having us either fund funds or go in on rounds, I think is a really critical part there because we can utilize and leverage that expertise, I think, to, to give us a little bit of security or hedge a bit on our investments. But, but Bailey, very good question. That's gonna be a, a one that we, we definitely cover. And then how would we deal with later rounds? Could we reserve funds for later rounds in, in organizations that maybe are continuing along that path? Again, Bailey, thanks, thanks for that question. I think it's a really good one. And, and again, we, you know, this whole idea of, of an anchor tenant and, and a company that could maybe get purchased and, and continue to grow or spawn off, you know, 100 entrepreneurs, that's a great thing for us. And so looking at this entire thing is, is really what we're going for with these discussions as well as the continued, you know, kind of the, the journey toward SSBCI and making that happen is, is really what we're after. So as I mentioned, we do have two more sessions. We're going to be talking next with the mentors that, that we know throughout the state. A couple of them were mentioned today. So we're gonna be very excited to, to hear from them. And then we're also going to, we're also gonna be talking with fund managers and learn their side of the table and understand what they're going for. And again, these things are clearly all super connected. And one thing I, one thing I mentioned, I think, early, early on, but Heather really, really said it well, was when we were talking about, you know, these VC funds, we have this sort of a stereotype that they're, you know, basically ruthless killers and, and really just trying to get out there and, and take a company and make as much money as possible. But I think she said it really well, that you've got to find those that want you to succeed and do it in a way that is pushing you forward, which might be uncomfortable, but pushing you forward in a way that is going to get you success because it gets them success as well. And so I think leveraging that expertise is huge. And so we're really excited to, to get that. But then also the mentorship piece of it. All of these things work together. You have to have founders with, with, you know, the guts to do it, the idea in their head. You've got to have mentors of people that have done this before and maybe see the world from a different perspective than somebody who's right in the middle of that tornado. And then, of course, those folks who have, who have funded companies and seen the success and know how to push and make folks just, just uncomfortable enough to keep it moving. And so that's our, that's really, if you wrap those three things together, that's the intent of these discussions is to kind of get all of those perspectives and then work toward utilizing those SSBCI funds in the best way possible. With that, I might put Erin on the spot and just ask her to, to say a few words to close this. And, and again, I think, Mark, you were asking whose idea was this? You know, this really is part of, and, and you've seen Erin in board meetings, you've seen her in, in other committee meetings. It's really her idea of making sure we dig into the details. And so Erin, thank you for, for kicking this, these things off and, and really having the, this as your brainchild. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Well, and thanks to the board members. I think I've heard so many times, just, you know, we, we take on such big topics that we want to have time to digest and really understand and make sure that we're making good decisions. And we only can do that if we have good information. And Heather and Mike, you gave us great information to be working with and chewing on and digesting as we tackle this VC and as we start pushing the state in directions that we haven't been in before and, and treading new waters. And, and I think these will be great insights to helping us make some good decisions and really pushing the state in positive directions where we can see some impact. So I want to thank both of you for taking the time to meet with us and, and hash through this and making us think. And we want to leave the opportunity open for thoughts or feedback you have as we're going down this path. You know, anytime you have some comments or, or thoughts on direction that we're going, good or bad, you know, make sure you're sending those our way because we really look for this. So I think it'll be great, the next couple of conversations that we have, and then really getting to the point where we get to implement this program and make some things happen. So thank you, everybody. Thanks to the board members for taking the time out of your guys' schedules to, to be able to be here. So and Josh, thank you for moderating this and getting us through so well. Nicely done. So.
Well, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. It was wonderful.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Thanks, Heather. Bye-bye.
Bye, guys.